Planning board meeting is being recorded. First things, the minutes of the last meeting.
Moved.
Motion.
Moved by Joe, seconded by John. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of four. Not unanimous of four. Four. How's that? Got a couple of minutes. Let's do number three. We get that out of the way. Wendy? You're up.
Tell me to just read the...
Yeah, go ahead.
Site plan waiver for Wendy Beltramini, 6466 Central Street. The applicant requests site plan waiver approval to allow for a modification to the previously approved plan showing the reconstruction of a mixed-use commercial building on the subject property. The building has replaced the previous building damaged by fire. A special permit was issued by ZBA in August of 2012. In addition to the reconstruction of the building, originally, the existing parking lot was to be expanded, including a new engineered retaining wall. The current plan that you have before you, the current proposal, has eliminated the new retaining wall and proposes to the repaving of the previous, previously existing parking area in the rear of the building and the construction of a new handicap access as part of the front entrance. The State Architectural Access Board is to review that access and will issue a decision at their upcoming April 28, 2014, meeting. Site plan appropriately notes that forthcoming ruling, therefore, recommend the requirements for full site plan submitted be waived, subject to all pertinent departmental comments. Now, you've got a favorable from town engineer. And no concombs required. And as I mentioned, the Architectural Access Board will be granting a waiver that whatever it is will fit in the footprint between the building and the front sidewalk.
Any questions from the board?
Is there a net increase or decrease to parking with the elimination of that wall?
Well, not really. There was, originally, I was told that the handicap ramp should be in the back of the building. And that is why I was going to expand the parking to fit a handicap spot back there. It's been an awful long process finding out what was right and what was wrong, and what my architect designed, and many other people that were involved. And I recently discovered that the handicap park, the handicap ramp needs to be in the front of the building. So with changing that, the only thing that the back parking lot is being used for is for tenant parking.
I, I'm just, the initial site plan?
Right, the initial site plan.
Parking spots were there. I'm just, I just...
There was four.
Yeah, the plant, the last plan that was approved that proposed the expansion of the parking lot had four spaces. But it also had a 10-foot-high retaining wall further to the east than the current retaining wall. So what you're seeing here is almost an as-built plan with only a slight expansion of paving in the back for those three stalls. The gravel area is still left so that there's sheet flow drainage in the back. And this is substantially the way it had been before.
So it's just a net reduction of one parking spot, is basically what you're telling me. It's not as...
From the last approved plan, correct.
I was just trying to gauge perspective of what we're doing here, that's all.
Any other questions from the board? What's the pleasure of the board then?
I'll make a motion for the amended site plan.
For a waiver, second one.
I don't think it was a waiver, was it?
Yeah.
Was it a waiver? Sorry.
Second. Moved by Pat, seconded by Joe, to grant the waiver of the site plan review. Any other discussion? There are none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Unanimous of four.
Something like that.
I get it.
That's been that way for a while, David.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Today is 22.
Two-two.
Yeah, there are three of them there, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the pen just ran out of ink.
Oh.
Nobody can read that, any of them.
That's how, that's how we know it's him. If you could read it, it'd be a forgery.
I dot my i's though.
I wonder if it ran out of ink.
Get all those dots?
Okay. Get back to the next slide. Five passed, there, we got the continued public hearing.
Is Neela crossing, yes?
Yes.
Hey, um, thank you. At the first presentation at the meeting, basically, we showed you what the proposal was to extend Field Pond Road out to Fisk Mill Road and construct 35 lots. We had a letter from Bonnie that had a few pages to it. We've addressed all those concerns, resubmitted revised plans, then met with her again to clean up any outstanding issues that she has, and we now have a clean letter from her. The, some of the changes from the original submission that you might, that you see are, in discussion with Larry, we had tightened up some of these lots along the open space to get area out of them that was not buildable anyways, and they were in excess of the area that they needed, sometimes one and a half times, sometimes twice as much. So by, by adjusting the areas on Lot 34, Lot 6, Lot 7, and Lot 8, we were able to add in excess of five acres to the open space. So now the open space, the two open space parcels combined, parcel one and parcel two, are almost 29 and a half acres of open space that would be, be needed to the town. Another significant change was that we, we were looking at, we had some concern about where the floodplain was in this area here, because we, we had looked at some wetlands flags in preparing the plans for the Conservation Commission filing. We saw some of the elevations that were on those flags didn't seem to agree with what we had shown here for topographically with the floodplain being at 289 in this area. So we went out and did some, some revised on-the-ground survey in this area and found that the flood, the actual floodplain elevation was going to be encroached upon by the proposed detention basin that we had along this, in this long, thin area in here. So what we did was we, we had a lot here where we had a corner that you really couldn't do much in, by the time you come in with setbacks from the front-back side. So we moved the basin to the opposite side of the street, built, constructed it here in an, in an area that was far enough away, and then just, just discharged across the street to this location here, so that we would eliminate any kind of disturbance in the floodplain.
What was Lot number?
That it was Lot number one. And it was, it was previously in the open space, it is now on Lot number one within an easement.
All right, thanks.
So, um, basically, you know, we, we've addressed all the concerns of all the letters, Bonnie being the last one. So now we, the outstanding issue mainly is the applicant is proposing to be... Here, you can see that it proposed to the phasing. First phase...
Stand on this side, so you're blocking the camera shot.
Okay.
Side, that's your good side anyway.
Oh, yeah. So, um, the first phase would be the construction of Field Pond Road from Fisk Mill Road, approximately 1,500 feet to this point here, just prior to a second wetland crossing. And then the construction of a 500-foot cul-de-sac known as, we're showing as Barbara's Way. And in doing that, we would be constructing 15 house lots along this phase. Part of the phase also includes the construction of an 8-inch water main out to an existing 12-inch main within Whitewood Road, which would allow this phase to have water supply to it, fire protection, as opposed to having to run the water from the existing stub on Field Pond all the way through out to Fisk Mill to just, just to be able to construct this first phase. Plus, the water department liked the idea of having some additional pressure from the 12-inch main to come in and eventually create a loop situation here and get a little bit more pressure here with, so the only dead-end stub would be at the end here. That phase would include the construction of two stormwater basins and one wetland crossing, temporary crossing here. And it would also include the wetland replication for the entire project. Phase two would be the remaining construction of the roadway out to Field Pond Road. And, and it should be noted that by phasing it in this manner, we are providing that no construction vehicles will travel through the Field Pond Road residential development that exists now to be able to, to build this project. Everything will access off of Fisk Mill Road and eventually continue to work its way towards Field Pond, so, so limiting the, the construction vehicles along the existing residential neighborhood. So the second phase would be the, the continued construction of Field Pond Road to the connection of the 35, almost 3,500-foot-long dead end that exists now. Two stormwater basins, one wetland crossing, and then eventually the construction of the remaining 20 lots. So, um, I believe you have a letter from Attorney Wickstrom regarding the...
Not yet.
You didn't give it to them yet?
Well, I forwarded it email, but he had a hard copy.
Okay.
Before we go into the phasing, does anybody got any questions on the construction part of the...
Did you want to go through Bonnie's, Bonnie's letter on the construction?
No. Only question I got, uh, it's a foolish question, I know, but there is a hydrant at the bottom of Fisk Mill?
We are proposing a hydrant here. There are hydrants placed in every location that the 5G vassals are placed, at 500 feet all the way to Field Pond Road, with one, with a stub, a hydrant stub.
Did Bonnie do another letter, or is this the first one?
No, this is the, this is the follow-up. The second one is, the second sheet starts Bob's response to her prior letter. But, uh, she said that comments have been addressed and new drainage calcs, and the copy of the ENF had been provided.
Can I just ask Bob a quick question?
Yeah.
Hey, Bob, of the open space, is any of that abut the pond?
Yes. The pond is right here. So this whole portion in here, this...
That's all part of it?
...15.8 acres is all abut, is all abut the pond, yes.
If we're looking at public access, where, where would that point be? Just from Whitewood, or?
Well, there's, there's a, there's a, there's a place here. This, this is all, this is all frontage that, that the open space abuts on here. And other than that, yeah, there's frontage here along Whitewood as well. We had, you know...
Because I, my understanding, or my belief is that you ought to turn around and donate to the town the open space.
Correct.
But my question is, is there any, have you come up with a plan or any type of, I guess, access point for the, for the residents to be able to actually access it? Because to donate it and not be able to access it really doesn't seem to be over the fink.
Well, here again, I mean, the, the pond itself is surrounded by wetlands, so, so to be able to actually get to the pond is not, is not really happening without going through wetlands. And there is access, there's upland, this, it's all upland area here with legal frontage of the open space. So there is access to the open space this way. There's access, plenty of access to the open space all along here, into this area here, as well as through here. But, like I say, you know...
How much, I, I mean, let me just ask you a foolish question. If, if you were going to make a gravel, I guess, a gravel parking area, how many cars would that accommodate in theory, in that upland area by the, by the wetlands crossing?
Well, it's a 100 scale.
Approximately, I, I don't, I'm...
Yeah, I'm just trying to see what you've got here. You've got 100 feet. Nine, 10. Well, in excess of 10, probably 10 to 15 spaces included, if you wanted to create some...
Well, I'm just thinking during construction, I'm assuming that, based on the ledge and the rock and so on and so forth, that there's going to be a degree of crushing. And when that occurs, I mean, just to make that some sort of a gravel parking lot for...
Also, it requires that they're going to need to know that now, because it's within 100 foot of the, the buffer zone.
Right, it's filed, there's a lot of filing and stuff. You know.
My point to this is if you're going to give it to the town as open space, then I, I think that you need to kind of look at an area that you can actually access if it's on the pond. That's just my thinking. If not, you're going to, you're going to get them all parked on the street.
Yeah, the only question I got on the pond is, who owns the pond?
The pond, um, well, part, portion of the pond is on the, would be within the open space. The property line to the town of Milford goes through the pond. So the town of Milford, the property, the town line is coincides with the property line of this particular property.
Well, I know, they're not, they're not going to spot in the pond.
They're not going to spot in the pond, and, you know, and then...
The subdivision of pond apparently owns the other part.
So, so the open space would be, would be, you know, part of the pond as well.
Well, is Lot 1, is that a buildable, not a buildable lot, is it, is it big enough that, that you wouldn't have to do an easement for the detention pond, or does detention pond have to be part of the lot?
It has to be part of the lot for area. Is it, is, it's big enough to, to develop? We did do a development plan, we did the drainage studies, but it's not enough, there's not enough area in it to, to be able to discount the area and make it 45,000 square feet.
The reconfigured lots that Bob mentioned earlier from the prior presentation actually, I think, provided better access, if I recall, from what it had been originally, in terms of access from the public street into upland areas as part, better part of the open space, to get to your, to your prior question.
I was of operation, what are we talking, 7 to 6, Monday through Friday, Saturday?
Whatever your standard conditions are, yeah, probably the same, yeah.
I'm more concerned on a Saturday than a, um, Monday through Friday, because I think standard's 7 to 6.
Don't have, basically, coming in this way here, you've got, you've got, you've got one residence that would be affected by it.
My only concern is going to be on a Saturday, and my other concern is going to be dust, you know, dust control is, is going to be my concern.
Yeah, here, here again, these are things that we address. They'll be in all this.
I'm just kind of echoing what my concerns are going to be, so I mean, idealistically, Saturday, I, you know, I don't think I usually start till 8 o'clock. I mean, pushing it back an hour, probably 8 to 3, I think, is, is normal.
They say it's 8 o'clock anywhere, right? But not by law?
It could. Want to make it 9, then? No.
I, I think 8 is reasonable, but not 3 o'clock, though.
8:30? Again, we, the only problem is you try, we try to be sensitive to the neighbors that were actually living down there, and, again, so, like I said, my major concerns is just going to be making sure that, that the time and then, you know, the, the dust control.
There's nobody really close as far as the road construction goes, but...
Bob, there may, may not be, but it's, you know, as you get into warmer months and people have their windows open, it seemingly, they hear everything, and dust comes from the, you know, from hotspots, so...
Since, since you mentioned inspectors, if we could, if we could get to the, to the letter basically saying that a full-time inspector seems to be a little excessive for a project, for any kind of residential project. Obviously, there's going to be a lot of time in the beginning processes of clearing and blocking. I think that, that there is not going to be a need for inspector to be on-site. We would like it to kind of be a little bit more specific as to, you know, during what process inspectors need to be. Obviously, the water company has their own inspector. So, um, I know in the past, you know, drainage and, and Mike used to do it, so now, I mean, if it's drainage, you know, you've got an inspector when drains is being put in, an inspector when the road's brought up to subgrade. But to have a full-time inspector there is pretty, I think, excessive and going to add to the cost of the project for, there are going to be a lot of times when there's not going to be anything to inspect.
Again, as inspectors, well, again, this is my, my thoughts. Inspectors are there when they're doing work. The water company's there to inspect the water pipe, the water company doesn't inspect the back fill, the back fill of the trench and all that. So, when they're doing work, again, we're going to have to hire somebody, maybe a retired person in the business, that when they're doing work, they're going to be there, when they're not doing work. Again, when they're working on the house lots, the, off of the road, then by all means.
Right. What I'm saying is, is that, yeah, once you get the road to subgrade or whatever, then I can see that there'd be a need for an inspector, but until that point, I don't know.
I mean, the problem with that...
Well, you need the inspector for compaction, too.
How do we, well, how do we get somebody, and how do we assure that they're going to be there and be available unless we're telling them that it's a full-time position for a certain length of time? I mean, you know, we don't have a person available per se, and who says we're going to find somebody that says, "Okay, tomorrow I'm going to need you, I won't need you for another week and a half, okay, can you come out?" You know, or you call the day before and expect them there. That, that isn't a situation we're going to have. And then I can tell you what's going to happen, is they're going to go ahead and do their work, and then all of a sudden, it's not going to be inspected. And it's going to come down on us. So, yeah, I may agree that maybe you don't need them full-time, but I don't know that that's reasonable in terms of being able to get somebody out there when you do need them, and when you don't have them, and tell them, "Oh, no, you can't do this work." And it comes back, and then someone's going to say, "That's not, you know, oh, no, we're going to have to go ahead." That's not going to, that's not going to save them any money either. And they're not going to be too happy, and they're either going to go ahead with the work, and we're not going to have it inspected. Or somebody's going to come back bitching that, that we're holding them up. So I think you've got to be careful with saying that, because I, I, I think it's, it's so variable of time, that it's going to be tough to get somebody.
And the other, the other consideration is, is the 30% contingency when it's pretty much been the...
Is there a way for the inspector that it's, or, let's try to be somewhat reasonable so that, you know, so that we're all coming on the same, is it a 25-hour, you know, a week for X amount of period? I mean, is that, I mean...
Well, you may, you may not have to do 40 hours a week.
Right.
No, no, but I think you need, I think you need to identify something that's tangible that this week might be 10, because next week you're going to do 35, and that, and you, and, you know, I don't have a problem if that's the way you work it out, but I think you need to set up an arrangement, so that there's an understanding, so that everyone understands.
Well, Bonnie should be the one who makes the calls whether you need it or not.
You can just work out the logistics of that, yeah.
Yeah, maybe, maybe... And, and I think they're going to have to, they're going to have to give us an idea as to what they're going to do and when, and all, and, and, you know, you may be able to work it out to, to somebody that's a part-time position, but, you know, you, we're going to have to be able to, I think you're going to have to be able to at least tie it down to say, "Okay, two weeks from now, based on the schedule, you're going to be needed for, for 32 hours. Three weeks from now, we're not going to need you." You, you can't, you can't expect that the day before, you're going to call for an inspection and have it available.
Absolutely. It should be, there should be a two-week, should be a two-week on the...
Well, I mean, maybe if you can find the right person, maybe, maybe there's a way where he shows up, and she shows up every day in the morning, he talks to the, the site contractor, and the site contractor informs him what he plans on doing that day, and he can decide whether or not there's anything for him to inspect. And then, you know, what he can do, he can just come every day and just, you know, if he has to put in for a three-hour minimum or whatever it is, then, you know, it's, it's not like, you know, because there could be some days where he might show up and you have to be there all day long, because they're going to do...
We'll have to talk to Bonnie and go along with what Bonnie wants, and have Bonnie, Bonnie's going to run it. Then, again, what's, if it's approved, then see if we can get, get somebody here to advertise and do it. I mean, if they come in the morning, it's pouring rain, then it's, it's time to go home.
Right. The other issue is, like I said, the, the recommended 30% contingency, it seems a little excessive for the bond estimate. We've always, it's always been the process of 20%, but I, I don't know where the 30% comes from. I kind of think I have an idea of what, you know, that, that, you know, that the applicant, or the owner of the property has been linked to other incidences in town where...
Out of fairness to Bonnie, I think she also at one point told us that the contingencies on certain projects weren't great enough, and the escalating costs and so on and so forth. So, again, that's one of the things that she had said to us. I, I don't want to venture any farther than what she had said to us, rather, because now we're just speculating, and I don't want to do that.
Well, here again, obviously, if you're going, if you're going to defer to, to her on this matter, as well as you deferring to the inspector, then we, you know, we don't need to continue, we don't need to discuss it anymore, so...
I think Scotty had recommended that, too, in one of the prior...
Yeah, Scotty had recommended it in his, too, but, so...
Well, I think he did it based on, based on costing and what we're getting. We've, we've gotten burnt on what's been left, so when we did it at 20, so I mean, I think that's part of the reason.
That's why he did it. I, I mean, I, that was a recollection I have.
So, I, you know, I don't think it's fair to put anything on it being the applicant or anything. It's, it's the town being burnt and Scotty having to pick up the pieces and stuff we have to finish, and not having enough money in there. And I, and, you know, whether, whether that, the right number is 27 or, or 30, I'm not sure, but I, I think we're trying to just cover, to make sure that the town doesn't get stuck with, with being the one that has to pay.
Yeah, I think... Idealistically, you get it back.
I think a lot of it has to deal with the fact that, you know, if the town has to do it, they have to pay prevailing wage when the contract is...
Correct. But unfortunately, that's what we have, that's what we're coming from at the end of the day. We've got to cover ourselves. So what ends up happening.
So you've got to be able to cover that condition, but maybe there's a way to look at it and see what that difference is between the prevailing wage and what the contractor's wage is, and say, "Well, it's, it's going to be X amount of percent more."
Well, I think Bonnie listed that in her letter, that she said that...
She did. She said, yeah, she wanted 30%.
Well, no, she said 30, but she also said that, that the applicant needs to come up, I believe, she said the applicant should be coming up with a cost estimate in terms of stuff, so...
Yes, yes.
I mean, I think we can take a look at what those differences are, maybe, maybe adjust that number, but not knowing what, what the applicant thinks the number is.
Right.
Yeah, Mike, we, because we had discussed it back and forth with Mike on a couple, on a couple of them. He had some...
I agree, 30% isn't bad. 30% isn't bad.
We've got to pay prevailing wage, and it's covering your costs.
No, it's, it's, I'll tell you that. It was handled.
Thank you.
So, um, as I said, the, the other issue basically that continues to be outstanding with regards to the phasing is the, how, how the applicant is going to propose to bond the entire project and still phase the project during construction and bond the phasing. So what I've just passed out to you is a letter from Attorney Wickstrom representing what the applicant is proposing to, you know, how he's proposing to, you know, to bond the project and make sure that there's adequate and sufficient money to, without, without actually telling you what the bond amount is, we're looking for this particular methodology of providing a bond. And then, you know, and, and it basically says in there, "We will sit down with the town engineer and agree on a bond amount." So, um, you can read that, and if you have any questions, Attorney Wickstrom will be glad to address them for you.
What's the cost of the road?
We haven't, um, he's, the contract, he's got a contractor looking at the plans, but he, you know, he hasn't, he said in the letter that that was something that he, once he gets his numbers, he'd sit down with Bonnie and see if she agrees with the numbers or not, you know?
This is the letter we'd emailed previously, today, right?
So, if he sits down with Bonnie and they come up with a number, I'm just going to use a magic number of $100, and she says $100 plus 30%, it'd be $130.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't understand what you're asking us in correlation, because if you're going to...
Well, he's just, he's, basically, what, we're going to, we're going to come up with a number that's going to be for, for, we're going to come up with a bond amount for phase one and a bond amount for phase two. And basically, what, what this, what this is saying is, is that he's not, he's never going to get any money back from his phase-one bond amount, and in, because it's going to go to phase two. And in, in addition to that, $30,000 from the sale of each house will also be added to the bond amount of phase two for an additional $450,000 to cover the, you know...
Here's my problem, Bob, and I'm not trying to be difficult. I don't know what the cost of the roads are, so you're throwing numbers that are somewhat meaningless, because I just want to know what the cost of the roads are.
Yeah, I'm not trying to throw any numbers at you, because I don't have the numbers. What we're trying to come up with now is not the number of the bond, but the process and the methodology of determining the bond.
But I think, I think it's critical that, that you have the total number, because you're, you're saying, "Okay, we're going to add $450,000 to it."
But that doesn't, it's meaningless.
Maybe way too much, or maybe too little, I don't know. I don't know the cost of the road, I don't know what that gives us.
My only problem is, is I want to make sure that the road is completed. But the way you're proposing it is, is, doesn't make any sense to me, because I don't know what the costs are. So I need something to gauge, so I can figure out if your proposal, you know, is viable or not. I don't know.
Let me, let me just summarize it a little bit, maybe fill in a couple of blanks there. What we're proposing is, when you endorse a plan, you have to make sure that the construction of the ways is secured, right? And so I've got a draft Form F covenant that we would endorse at the time the plan is endorsed. No lot can be built upon, sold, transferred, because of that covenant, until either road is built, right, and it's completed, and then you're secure that the road is done, and then they release lots. Or a combination of some road is done, and then they place a bond in place, with a cash surety.
Or a combination of some road is done, and then they place, uh, a bond in place, with a cash or surety. Here it would be with a tri-party agreement with the bank. So, uh, let's say he builds up, uh, he puts in the binder coat and all the utilities and everything up through Barbara's path. Uh, at that time, the whole subdivision's under the covenant, he can't get any release of lots. At that time, we then talk with the town engineer and say, and with our contractor and say, here's how much it is to, uh, finish. And then we'll have that contingency of that amount through our tri-party agreement with the bank, plus, we've talked between twenty and thirty percent, but whatever the number is. And then, so now that bond is in place, plus a contingency to finish that. What we're then proposing, so we, because we, I'm trying to sell this to the bank, we've talked to a couple of banks about financing this project. One of the bankers had a very good idea too, and, and my client said, why don't you then take thirty thousand dollars per lot as they sell, add that into the, uh, bond, okay? The tri, within the tri-party agreement. So, let's just say for numbers, there was four-hundred thousand dollars left to complete the road. And under our scenario, you'd need four-eighty, with one-thirty, you'd need five-twenty. And then as he goes up, he'll sell fifteen lots, there'd be another four-hundred-and-fifty, so now moving into that last phase, you've got, and that's the example, nine-hundred-and-seventy thousand.
I get what you're saying, but here's your problem. In order for me to get my money, you gotta sell fifteen lots, and if you don't, then I, I fall short, I fall short on completing the road on my own. So I understand what you're saying, but this is why I need to know numbers, because your scenario may be viable, but it may not be. I don't know without the numbers.
Right. The, the other issue, I don't, I don't, I don't have an issue, I'm not voting on this, but the other issue, or the other comment that I would make is that what we're getting, as this goes along, to a certain extent, if that road isn't completed in the loop, is we've got two, we've got an existing cul-de-sac that's way too long, it probably shouldn't have been approved as is, it was, it was, it was approved because somebody said they were gonna, they were gonna finish this and, and make this come through in the end, and, and so they, they extended it, and we probably shouldn't have. And now we've got another effectively dead end that is well beyond the, the limits of the town on the other side. And, and until that loop goes through, you really don't, to me, in terms of safety, public access, you've probably got no more than six or seven lots on that lower section that, 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 to me, should be sold until that loop goes through. That's my comment on it, in terms of what we have.
One other point is, though, as he's going up, if he sells lots, one, two, three, four, five, that's another hundred-and-fifty thousand. I know you don't know the number yet, but that, uh, that would be on top of the initial amount plus a hundred-and-twenty percent, a hundred-and-thirty percent.
You may have enough for the bond at that point, saying, because I don't know how much of the work he's gonna have done for the rest of the road to then be taken off of the initial bond that would be put onto the second one, until we, you know, the, the, either there has to be wording in the mechanism or whatever, I think, in order to make it work out, and then we have to have an idea of what, of what those numbers really are. I mean, I think there is a way you can do it to a certain extent, you know, before we, before we issue or before the board would issue occupancy permits, but, but without knowing the numbers, it's awful tough to say what that, whether it works out or not. I think that's what Pat's getting to.
It's not challenging, and again, it may be, it may be very fluid, what you're trying to do. And certainly, we're trying in our best effort, but lacking information is, is very challenging us, and again, the end game here is the road needs to be completed. So, I understand you need, you need financing options that are, that are, that are saleable to the bank, I get that.
Right.
But you need to sell us on the premise of how the road's being built, and the only way you're gonna be able to do that is actually give us numbers that are viable, so that we understand, because giving us scenarios without concrete numbers or numbers that, that are at least they're somewhat reasonable is very challenging, at least for me.
Yeah, again, we can approve it, they can go, and before they release any lots or anything.
But I'd, I'd rather see some numbers.
Oh, Bonnie's gonna have to come up with it, that's what the, the job is.
We have some numbers here.
We have some numbers, they were estimates.
Oh, magically now, magically.
Oh, you're hesitant to put them in the record, you know?
They're not gonna be in the record, we're only talking, you know.
Okay, I think, I got, I got some numbers from the contractor, okay, well, right now, we are, right in the range of about one-point-five, one-point-six, without the thirty percent though, okay, that's what he came up with, and-
To the complete road or just?
The complete road.
Complete.
Right. Over here, there is just water and drainage, you don't have sewer, nothing though, okay? So, and then he came up with a number of, for the first phase, I think it's about sixty-five, sixty percent of that cost is for the first phase, okay? Fifty-five, sixty percent is for the first phase, and forty-five to fifty percent, forty-five to forty percent is for the second phase, okay? So, so basically, the way we are, we are proposing is, it comes to about, about a mil, what, nine-hundred thousand, eight-hundred thousand for the first phase, something like that? If you go back to sixty percent of, that's nine-hundred thousand of one-point-five though.
Well, it may actually be more if you add the thirty percent to it, so, but for discussion purposes, nine-hundred.
Okay, so for discussion, yeah, we can, so, basically, what, what, what I'm proposing is, we're gonna do all the road work for the first phase, okay? Then we'll come back to the, and see exactly how much work is left over. At that time, let's say, five-hundred thousand, four-hundred thousand dollars work is left over for the first phase. So at that time, that's the bond we're gonna post with the-
It makes more sense of why you were proposing the thirty grand for the four-fifty now, so at least, at least you're shedding some light of how you backed into your numbers.
Right, that's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, I didn't know what-
Well, I had these numbers, I don't know why you're being-
No, no, but understand, based on, now I, I'm getting a clearer picture of what you were trying to do.
Okay, so, so basically, at that point, I have, I have put about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand as a bond, after doing all the, up to the binder level, okay, for the first phase. So we come back and we all agree that the bond figure with thirty percent or whatever it is, half a million dollars, just for discussion's sake, let's say. And then, as we go back and start building the first phase, we'll be putting thirty thousand dollars, so at the end of completion of the first phase, you will have about nine-hundred thousand dollars, nine-fifty thousand dollars sitting there, which is enough to do that, and the, that part is only about six-hundred thousand dollars, but I'm putting more money there, you know?
Again, when you start divulging the numbers, it makes a little more sense, it's just-
That, that, that's what I have from the contractor, okay, so.
Did you look at our zoning bylaws as far as the bonding?
Excuse me?
Have you looked at our zoning bylaws as far as the bonding goes?
I didn't see that, no.
I think the only bonding we can take is a cash bond, a R.A.
Surety.
A double-A bond from, uh, an insurance company.
You do a tri-party, yeah.
Oh, yeah? I know, I thought that was-
We just did one. What'd we do on for?
I don't have a problem with the tri-party.
I'm just, I, I'm not saying, I'm just saying what-
Tri-party's almost like a cash though.
Yeah.
Well-
List the bank yourself. Saying.
That's-
That is a robo.
That's why we, we used to take leather, irrevocable letters of credit too.
No more letters of credit.
We don't do that anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or gold pieces.
Yeah, we do that, we've done that.
That, that doesn't happen anymore.
Okay, any, uh, other questions?
No, I'd like them, I'd like them to get with Bonnie and, and, and vet out the numbers for the road, like, as far as that-
Yeah, I'd like to hear them.
Okay, well, it's a public hearing, so anybody from the audience got a question, uh?
I have one question.
Name and address.
You have to name and address.
My name is Ed Bergman, I'm representing the Nippon Run Gun Club on Fisk Mill Road.
What was his last name?
What was your last name, sir?
Bergman, B.E.R.G.M.A.N.N.
Thank you.
Uh, you said you're now putting a catch basin down adjacent to the road?
Detention basin right here.
Uh, I'm sorry, retention pond. How far from the road will the first house be as a result?
From which road, Fisk Mill Road?
Correct.
It was gonna be in the same place it always gonna be, right back up in here in this, in the widest part of the lot, so approximately two-hundred-plus feet from Fisk Mill Road?
What difference does that make?
Does he answer the question? Anybody else, uh, have any questions for the board? Yes.
While you're on the subject of the team ruining forty-nine boxes, uh, just on the same with the subject, I don't know, I don't wanna get confused with the bond, but I, I just wanna find out if the gentleman was, was explaining that if he completed the first phase, uh, you know, the, the, the road, uh, and the drainage and all that, and the, he still, he still put up whatever was, whatever would cost to complete that, if he put up, say, four-hundred and a half million dollars, would you release the lots in that first phase? Or, um, without bonding the second phase, or would you have a bond for the complete road before you released lots in the first phase?
That's what was-
That's what we're working out.
Yeah, yeah, I was just wondering, if that, I know they, they're proposing to phase the project.
We're doing, we're doing it to protect the, protect town and make sure that it's, it's gonna be-
Right, the town, I know you- So you, none, none of that has been settled yet, establish.
We're actually doing it opposite of what's normally done. Normally, you would, you would complete a section, and in that phase, and every time you would get a lot released and build a house, you would get some, you would get relief from your bond and you'd get bond money back. Instead, we're putting bond money in.
Right.
So, so, so the, the, so the, the bond amount for this area will never diminish, it'll always be there to, to be credited towards the next phase, plus additional money for the, from the sale of each lot.
Okay.
Which, which, uh, I'm sorry, uh, we're still, we're representing Nippon Run Gun Club, and I, I know when you said you put that detention pond on the opposite side of the road where you first proposed it. Is that, the area in that lot, is that, is that upland, not counting that pond?
All upland, it's that, that area is, a hundred percent upland, in this lot here.
Yeah.
It's high, it actually slopes this, in this direction, so it doesn't, the development of this lot doesn't slope towards your property, it actually slopes away from your property towards the proposed roadway.
On the opposite side of the road, is there any-
It's here.
Where the open space, is there no building there?
No building here, no, no building at all from, the first building would be way up here, that'd be the first building.
Are there any eighty-one P plan on, on Fisk Mill Road?
No.
No, all right.
No, no, no frontage lots, it's all, there's no, there's no viable building there, it's very thin.
Yeah, I, I just, our concern was that the distance from the first house to our existing ranges, I know, uh-
Across the street, no, we're gonna, we're gonna be quite a ways.
I know, I know the, the existing ranges are protected from that five-hundred-foot and also from a, any civil action for noise pollution, but we had, we do have, I, I don't know, in the event when the, when the subdivision is approved, is it approved with conditions sometime?
Yeah, it won't be, there won't be any conditions, because we can't put them in, but again.
You can't, but you can't.
We understand the state statute that says.
Right, we had, we had a couple of, a couple of requests, I don't know if the planning board would consider, uh-
You have them writing, or?
Yeah, yeah, I can give these to you, and, uh, I, I know they have some open space that they're, they're giving to the town, and probably because it's not built for land, but I know the planning board sometimes can, can, uh, request open space for a period of three years, is that correct?
That's reserved for park purposes.
Well, our open space, our, our public, you know, preparation.
That's if the town's gonna take it, which isn't gonna happen on this one.
But anyways, if you wanna consider, those are, uh, some suggestions.
Okay.
Guess we don't get across.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So does it, uh, does it appear that there would be sufficient time before next meeting to get all this stuff straightened out, come back to Bonnie, so the board can have some, some numbers?
I would imagine so, yeah, I mean, I would say, there's already been some preliminary work done by the contractor, so we'll just be just buttoning things up and just be, being able to sit down and meet with her, so.
Do you want this?
Thanks. So I'd suggest you continue till the May sixth meeting, keep the hearing open.
Well, Bonnie's gonna have to go through it a little bit on her own to get, to get-
All right.
So, next meeting, I don't, I don't know what Bonnie's schedule is, I'm, you know, I don't know how much she's got for town meeting stuff, but I'm just saying, it might be, it might be difficult for her to be ready, they may be ready, but it's a lot of work on Bonnie's end.
Go to the second one in May to give, give ample time for, uh, Bonnie to review.
Well, the only, the only-
What's our calendar?
Well, the ninety days-
Sixteenth, twentieth, isn't it?
Yeah, our meetings are on the sixth and the twentieth of next month. The ninety-day window runs out on the twenty-second of next month, which is why I suggested we at least continue this one until, uh, the next meeting, and if things aren't ready, we just continue it again. But in the, in the small likelihood that it might be, that way they could take a shot at it.
Sure.
All right, that works.
I would prefer, prefer to take a shot, be able to try to get ready.
That, that's, again, that, that's probably fine to do that, but I think we need to check with Bonnie, make sure she's aware that if she can't get it done, there's no expectation from this board that it'd be done.
Right, right. I can relate to that, and she'll watch.
And I can reckon it, we'll remedy it in the ninety days, and two-hundred and twenty days is we can call to vote then.
You know, we also could talk to her.
Construction.
So don't wa, don't worry about the ninety day. I'm sure they'd be more than ample to give an extension if need be, in case of the alternative.
Well, that's true.
I just wanted, again, th, this isn't something that we should be rushing into, and to Joe's point, ensuring that Bonnie has ample time is, is what needs to happen.
Well, if you, you know, sure.
I'll do whatever you want. Do you wanna go to the sixth or the twentieth? I just-
I think it's not a bad idea to go to the sixth, and then if you need to continue, it's the twenty.
Motion for the, to continue this to the sixth.
That might work.
Close the public hearing and-
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, continue the public hearing to the sixth.
Does the board have any other issues other than, other than the phasing and the, and the bonding, or just, no?
I didn't.
Oh.
The only other thing I, uh, uh, again, is just the hours of operations, as far as I'm concerned, the dust control, and if there was a way to work out some sort of gravel turnoff area for the, for the residents to actually be able to utilize the property, that, that will be diddled over to them.
And the inspector?
The inspector needs to, but, but I mean, ask Bonnie what her views are on that. I mean, I, I think it's, it's a twenty-hour, you know, flexible is what I think it is.
In other towns where they don't have a full-time engineer or they don't have engineer, they hire some consulting firms and at different stages, they combine them.
And again, if that's, if that's what she prefers, I'm with you. I don't think you need a forty-hour work.
Yeah, because of the, other way.
I don't think you do, but you're not gonna be reporting to us, you're gonna be reporting to her.
Depending on how Bonnie does it or not, I can tell you right now, if you, if you go to consulting firm, seeing how they work for one, and you, you expect them to be there twenty hours a day, you're gonna, you're gonna pay almost as much as you would hiring somebody else a full-time person.
Yeah, but the thing is, uh, with-
I mean, I, you know, whatever the answer is, I'm just telling you what the, what the facts of the matter is, if you, if you, if you're gonna call out somebody from-
A professional firm, you're gonna pay just as much as if you hired, if you retire, I get that.
If you hired somebody who worked for one. But I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the issues, well, I guess we've been, because the, the board of health used to have positions available when we did septic testing that were temporary positions available. I'm just thinking in terms of, of categories for the town, in terms of what they'd be able to hire, and John may know, actually, if I-
Sorry, what was the question?
Whether the town could hire in a, a, a part-time inspector, you know, through, through what mechanism, if we were to have a part-time inspector, but I think there probably are positions in the town.
Oh, you mean for, as not a consultant, you mean to hire a part-time?
Right, yes, yes, it's, it would be a part-time variable, the town would hire, or we'd have to go through for that, I'm not sure what.
Just what, just what this project, or is it something else?
I'm sorry?
Just what this project, you're trying to hire a person, you're saying?
No.
No, I don't wanna hire, I, we would, if the town is gonna do it, they'd have to hire him as a part-time, we'd have to figure out how to do that.
Be a contract employee.
Yeah.
Is this the one part-time? Yes. That might be a viable option.
Yeah, moved by, uh, Pat, seconded by John, uh, to continue the public hearing to the sixth, yes.
Uh, you guys were talking about just a couple of things, but, so, you're, you would like us to meet with Larry and the town engineer with hard numbers, right?
Well, I think you guys have to vet your numbers comparatively, yes.
Okay, and then come to some agreement on-
Ideally, if you're prepared for the sixth, it'd be, it would be, it would probably be helpful if you were prepared for the sixth to invite Bonnie here, so that this can kinda-
She should come, she should be here.
Just a thought.
But I think, I, I think you're gonna need to have numbers that, that you're comfortable with and Bonnie's comfortable with in order to explain the, how the numbers would actually work out as, as you-
Thank you.
As you move forward in the project.
Right.
And I think that's, one of the reasons Bonnie isn't here is that there were no numbers to review, and, and the letter was just available today, so.
In order to understand the story, you need, you need the background.
Okay, here we go, other further discussion, all those in favor?
Hi.
Close, you know, so, four, five, four.
Four.
You should be okay.
No, 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 no. Thank you.
Huh?
Larry, I'll probably give Bonnie a call during the day, I wanna go down, I guess, before they're involved with the inspector thing, we should, you know, set up some kind of a, uh-
Patty, you are stating on this?
Yes.
So I, uh, just in full, yes, I'm invoking the rule of necessity on this, I am in a butter, but, uh- Seeing how we won't have a quorum otherwise, or-
Yeah.
Four votes are required.
Okay, you'll need to read the notice.
Uh, it was a public hearing, huh?
Yep.
Yeah, please.
Milford Planning Board Notice of Public Hearing on Tuesday, April twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen, in room three, Milford Town- Milford Planning Board Notice of Public Hearing on Tuesday, April 22nd, 2014, in room 3, Milford Town Hall, 52 Main Street. The Milford Planning Board will, at times designated, conduct public hearings regarding the following. The full application and/or maps of the above items are available for public inspection Monday through Friday, from 8:00 to 4:00, at the Office of Planning and Engineering, Town Hall, 52 Main Street. The notices were published on the 8th and the 15th of this month. First public hearing under this notice is the application of Edmund Masabney for a special permit to construct a professional office and bank building at 21 Main Street, which development to include a bank use with drive-through teller windows, assessors lots 438, 439, 440, 441, on a, on 1.31 acres, CBWR1 zoning districts.
Okay.
Are we ready?
We're ready.
For the record, John Fernandez appearing here as attorney for Edmund Masabney, who is with me and behind us for some reason, he's shy, didn't wanna come up front. Here with Bob Poxon as well, from Gary and Hellman. For introduction of the property, this is, and we're here for site plan approval and a special permit, which is why we need four votes available for a, a drive-through. That's the only reason we need the special permit at this point in time. This is a piece of property I think we're all familiar with. It's located actually directly across the street from my law office. So I'm intimately familiar with it, as in a butter. It is next to the parking lot, the municipal parking lot that services primarily the, the church on a regular basis, but a lot of commuter traffic as well, and parking in the neighborhood. Pond Street is the nearest intersection, directly beyond that is Beach Street, and of course, to the immediate left, as you're looking at the site, is the bike trail. It is historically the location of mixed use of commercial, the old speed shop, more cones, and a number of residential buildings. And as I explained at the zoning board hearing, after having been there for 20 years across the street, there apparently were more residential buildings than I even recognized on that site. When they started taking them down, the ones in the back. I think there were seven buildings on the site. So it was truly a, a mix of old and, in some cases, deteriorating properties and begging for a new use. It's in the CC zone, isn't it, Bob?
It is in the CB zone.
CB zone.
In WR1.
And it is a, and it's in the overlay, water protection overlay district, and that is why we went to Zoning Board of Appeals, because it's got a 70% impervious and needed to demonstrate that it was going to be appropriate for purposes of both detention and recharge. And, and clearly, as we explained to them that night, by taking down what had been there and, which was, had no controls whatsoever, and putting in place a very sophisticated control system for detention and then recharge, this is a significantly improved situation for the watershed. And I think, both, both as, as counsel, obviously somebody who's lived here all my life, as well as in a butter, this project is very exciting. Mr. Masabney is a dentist by training. He has a facility in, in Holliston that he operates, been in it since 2002.
Yes, in Milford, yeah, since 2005.
2005. He also has a facility on Main Street, further up towards the center of town, where he has a rented facility that he operates out of as well. And what he's looking for is to move and expand the Milford facility to a location that he would own. So his intention is to purchase this property, which is a little over an acre of land, and as you can see from it, construct a single building, which would be a two-story office building and a one-story adjacent building, which is the piece that's turned slightly angled to the, or actually 90-degree to the, the office building. That would be one story, and his hope is to attract a, a bank to that location. That is the purpose of the drive-through. It, it's, I think, going to be, when he's done a showcase facility, he's talking an investment of over $2 million into the location, cleaning it up. It's been vetted for quite a number of months through various iterations of design, until he finally settled upon this one, which was then worked through between Gary and Hellman, Vani, Larry, and other town officials to design the site in a way that you see very particular entrance and exit for main entrance, as well as for the exit for the drive-through, circulation and parking, as well as all the landscaping that will be placed. That's the background on it. We think that, obviously for purposes of the special permit, that the drive-through, if we're able to attract a bank to the location, is a critical component of that, and it's been carefully constructed to make sure that the queuing worked on-site for the double lane. I'm not sure that there's much more I can add at this point relative to that drive-through or the site plan, and I'll let Bob give you some background on the site plan itself.
Okay, thank you. As John had said, what we're proposing is a combination medical office building with a bank and drive-through. You can see the access, main access will be through this location here. There'll be one way in, two ways out, with turning lanes to go left and right. Parking will be along the perimeter for the most part, with parking in the front here, front of the building here, handicap spaces provided. The drive-through, obviously you would come in, come around the building, get to the bank, come back out. There's also a bypass lane here to get back out. There'd be one, just an exit only in this location here. Our site will be serviced by municipal water. The fire wat, protection would be a six-inch main coming in here with a post-ind indicator valve, and then a fire connection in the building here. Domestic water would be along the perimeter of the site, on the pilot, come in and come into the rear of the building, as well as the gas. The gas would do the same thing. The gas would come around and come into the rear of the building. Sewer would connect to an existing sewer manhole here and, and enter right into the building with one additional manhole in this location here, so that there could be a change in connections, difference in grade. Stormwater management, there'll be a series of catch basins and drain manholes put in, and then they eventually would discharge into two underground detention areas, here and here. These have been designed to attenuate both the peak runoff and also provide the necessary stormwater recharge and TSS removal under the stormwater management guidelines. They would then discharge to an area here, which would then eventually get to the, towards the Charles River. There's a 100-foot buffer here, and that's a buffer to the Charles, there's a little bit of flagged wetlands right in this location here. As John said, this is the municipal parking lot, which is used for church parking for the most part, but during the week, it's commuter parking, and the bike trail is here. I think that's pretty much it. We've, like, as John says, we've been vetted a couple of times and with different scenarios to, you know, how this has developed, and we've had, we've addressed all the letters from all the various town departments in, in that process to get to this final layout and plan, as you see here.
Okay, I'll go through the, the letters. Larry gave a favorable approval. Vani has a request of a special permit, she gives a favorable, she gives a favorable approval, she has no other additional comments. Scott has his construction comments on the site, the work that has to be done offsite on the town roads. The fire department, fire hydrant has to be installed in the bypass lane, opposed to the parking fire lane, which is done. Commission of Disability, the walkway between the public sidewalk and the business.
It's added right here.
Okay.
Originally was added, it was in a location where it was actually, you walked into a parking space, so if there was a car, there was an exit, so it was been moved since the first time you saw it to the, the, the open area next to the handicap space, so that's been taken care of.
Okay. We have the decision by the zoning board. Any questions from members of the board?
Yeah. Do you have a bank locked up? What if you don't get one, are you gonna build that, that addition?
Well, I, I.
If you build it and don't get a bank, what are you gonna put, a McDonald's?
No, no, whatever goes in there will have to fit in terms of the parking and the uses allowed. So I, I don't think he'll actually, I, I can't say for sure, that's gonna be worked out with the, the bank, I mean, with the, his lending bank, and with the construction people as to what he will do vis-à-vis constructing that portion. I don't think he's gonna wanna construct and leave an empty building there, but as he moves the construction, he's certainly gonna move to try and build that. If it's not a bank and it's some other use, he's gonna come back for an amended site plan to the extent that that would be required.
Oh, right.
But it's also not a site that lends itself to phase the construction very easily, so I suspect as he moves forward, he's gonna be very aggressive in trying to secure attendance.
There wouldn't be adequate parking for a, a.
For anything.
Right, exactly.
No. No, I just said that, I, true that.
But it could be appropriate for a sit-down restaurant, or it could be appropriate for some other use.
Okay, Larry?
Yeah, I had prepared a draft decision to suggest conditions. It should've been after the packet. It was clipped, it was clipped to the report, so it's a, it's probably right underneath what you got there. In the, yeah, just lift that whole thing up. There you go.
Yeah.
So primarily, the, obviously, the first page, the three introductory paragraphs just define what we're looking at. The findings of fact reiterate what you just heard, in terms of what's been submitted and what the proposal is. It's the motion section that actually suggests the fairly typical conditions of approval. So I'd taken the liberty of, of putting that together for your consideration. I believe that they, the conditions cover all the typical items. And really, the only reason we need a special permit is because of the drive-through feature for the proposed bank, so. And that obviously complies as far as the dimensions and the number of queuing spaces. My recommendation would be that you close the public hearing, approve the special permit, and as you can see, the last so-called condition, number seven on the last page, makes it clear that special permit approval also constitutes site plan approval.
I have one comment on the plan, babe.
Go ahead.
On the, on the Westley entrance and the, you've got, you've got a 24, 24-foot drive aisle, but there's really, as you, as you go from.
West.
Yeah, as you, as you come out of the, the drive-through section, you, you have to your left that 24-foot drive aisle, but I'm not sure why that needs to be 24 feet in the front, Bob, right there. And, and.
It's two-way traffic in front of the building, so.
Yes, but the, what, what's, what's, why would anybody be there and go that way?
Changed their mind, people changed their mind, so they don't wanna go out this way, they wanna into this double lane, whatever.
It's a, it's a single-lane entrance either way.
Well, it's a, it's an exit, it's, it's not, it's an exit only. The west curb cut's an exit only.
Yeah, and, and, and if you allow two-way traffic into that 24-foot, you get people that wanna short-circuit, and although it's an exit only, people going in and then making the move, whereas if you narrow this down, they're stuck facing traffic and there's no way for them to get out, which would stop people from trying to go into the exit only.
Well, I think, I, I think the reason that we suggested.
We could resolve that by just, just putting some sort of a painted thing or sign saying, "Do not enter from this direction." People who come through the bank drive-through may wanna come around here, they just got money to go to the dentist's office, so they may wanna turn in and come here without having to go out into the road.
Yeah, I think the, the reason.
Now, seriously, you know, my worst for dentists, you know, you gotta go get the bed for it before you go meet people.
The reason, though, we wanted to see it left open at the staff level anyway, was for that very reason. If you close it, you force any traffic that would otherwise be able to circulate internally to go back out on Main Street. And this is a real problem area, traffic-wise anyway, on Main Street, so that's why.
I don't, I don't know how that changes anything. You, you've got the same amount of traffic still entering or exiting Main Street. I'm not changing the total number on there.
Well, you would, you, if you forced the, the exiting traffic coming out of one of the drive-through queues to go out.
Leave, come back in.
And not recirculate, that's a trip that.
Yeah, that, that would, but I, I guess I'm willing to bet that the amount of people that would go to the bank first and then stop at the dentist's office is minimal.
Well, but there are other offices in the building. The dental office is only one.
Dr. Masabney will occupy the majority of the building, but there will be other tenants in the building likely, office tenants. I'm not planning a move at this time, but it's not beyond question.
What's, what's the entrance width of that driveway on the west side?
The curb cut?
Yeah.
I think it's a 12-foot drive, and the curb cut would be, what, 25, the western.
Drive aisle is 12 feet? Or it's bigger than that? Is it?
The drive aisle is 12 feet.
Alright.
Curb cut itself, from rounding to rounding.
Yeah, the curb cut I'm not as worried about. I'm more worried about the drive aisle.
Yeah, the drive was supposed to be 12.
12 feet minimum, yeah, single-lane 12 feet.
Originally, that wasn't there, and, and it was fairly late in the review process that the town engineer and I recommended that they put the escape aisle, exit only.
Well, I think the, the sign that's proposed, "Do not enter" on the west side, is, is, is way too far away from people to understand what they're not entering. If you're gonna put that sign, it really needs to be on those two islands at the extent of the, at the ends of the building per se.
Well, I would put it, in other words, here.
Right.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying. If you're, if you're, if your concern is to not have these people coming through to go out this way.
Just pull that choker down.
So we could just, we could just, you know, we could put something in here, well, that's what he was just asking to do, though, what you're just saying. We could pull this down. He, he was saying, why do we need to have this 24 feet here?
Yeah.
We could make this some, but, you know, you'd need to be able to come and make this swing, so that this lane here would be able to, but then there'd be no, you know, there'd be, so, so either, I mean, but you don't know, you don't know about truck traffic, circulation, and everything else, to shorten this up, you know?
Yeah, right.
I would just assume just put some sort of a painting on the thing saying, "Do not enter."
Well, what I'm saying is, the "Do not enter" sign that I believe you have on the west side of the property, all the way right there, is, is, is not gonna serve to stop those people from "do not" entering. I'm saying, move those to the two aisle, move those to the two aisles.
It's two things. It's designed to, to tell people they can't enter this way. I mean, just because of the way it's turned, it's, it's, it's made so that people coming this way realize, oh, I can't go this way, I have to go this way. But if we, if we, we could eliminate it altogether and just put it here.
That's what I'm saying.
It serves a purpose, that's what we're trying to do.
I don't think the, the turning.
So that, that could easily be done.
The turning template for a, for a delivery vehicle, a semi, just barely makes it through there, the way it is now. So that would be my only concern about choking it down to, to try and prevent the, the other traffic.
I, I, I'm not gonna get into it. Turning, turning movement's gotta make it, considering he's, he's got three lanes to come through on the other side. There's gotta be plenty of room, to be honest, but I, that's not my issue.
Take it easy on the poor guy plowing the stuff, too, you know?
We're thinking of rip up the curbs anyways, doesn't matter where you put them, babe.
Uh, Bob, sure.
Yes.
We got a letter, I didn't get to read one.
I didn't see one. I know they're not meeting until next Tuesday. I mean, if, obviously, there were sewer connections, there are probably multiple connections on this property prior to this, so now we're, now we're only having one. Now, read.
Yeah, we're only having one. Uh, I want, I'd like to hear from them, because there's something I gotta do about the multiples, babe. As you're doing the site work, you're gonna be tearing out the.
But capping them how they wanna do it.
Well, they've been capped already, but you're gonna be tearing out.
They've had issues down here, too, with some, with some of this stuff. They've had issues down here, too, with some of the, some of the flows and stuff, so they should probably.
Obviously.
I got no problem if we do it, hold it, and just until.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we've gotta, I've gotta make that change for that, that "do not disturb," that "no, you know, do not enter" sign. And as long as we, you know, we, we should have everything in the week, as long as we can get this thing resolved for the meeting on the 6th, and we, we can plan. They had the mylar ready, but obviously, we gotta, gotta make that one change, so you can't really sign anything here, so.
Well, it, I would suggest that the special permit portion of the review, you could finalize tonight, and then approve the site plan subject to these changes, and then sign off on the mylar whenever they get it back, 'cause we've got a 20-day appeal period that will start tomorrow.
Yeah, we'd like to get that 20-day appeal period running, so we can get the matter done, so, yeah, if we can do that. done, so, yeah, if we can do that.
I'll make that motion. Larry just said...
Close the public hearing and approve the special permit as requested and approve the site plan subject to the changes that we discussed.
Yes.
Sign the mylar when you, when you get it back.
And a letter from the shore, and a letter from the shore, boy.
I'll second that, babe.
Moved and seconded by John, uh, moved by John, seconded by Lena. Any other further discussion? There's also a public hearing, too. Anyone from the audience have anything to say?
Can you picture anybody to say?
Uh, no, no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed for, uh, four floor, one out in the, the peanut gallery.
Let me get you the original, babe, so you can sign that.
Can they get the sacred half? If they go up and around the block, they're okay. Come back to the line and then down Main Street, but otherwise, wow.
Traffic is gonna be in the middle of the...
Stand, please.
I'm thinking banks, if you're going in and out, it's tough. I recommended it to McDonald's.
Thanks.
I think I like this. Yeah, just gonna put a honeydew in there.
Yeah, right. Tell me, tell me another one.
Good night. Where am I on the...
Public hearing number three.
Number three.
Application of the Planning Board to amend Section 2.3 Use Regulation Schedule of Zoning Bylaw to permit life science research and development and scientific research and development uses in the business park and industrial zoning districts. You'll find in your packet all of the zoning hearings, there are three pages of them. And public hearing number three should be on the first page. This was the proposal we had discussed several times. Oh, I thought you, I thought you... It, it's Article 21 on the upcoming town meeting warrant. As you can see there on the page, it's the, it's the use chart that would list the new business uses as both life sciences research and development and scientific research and development. As you read over on the chart, there's a capital P under the BP Business Park Zoning District, and there's also a capital letter P under the IA, IB, and IC zone for those, for those uses. And there's also a change in the accessory use section that's being proposed so that the light manufacturing fabrication, production, and processing assembly and testing, what's associated with, with permitted uses in those zones, are showing up as a permitted use in the business park and the three industrial zones. And also the scientific research, which previously had been a special permit under all zoning districts, that's a spin-off of an old state statute change relating to zoning bylaws and scientific research. The suggestion now is to, in the business park and the three industrial zones, allow scientific research as a legitimate accessory use without any special permit. And that's pretty much it.
Any questions from the board on that?
No, this is all on number three, huh?
Yep.
Ask us if there's any questions in the audience.
Oh, thank you.
As well, close it and make the motion.
Do you?
Any questions from anyone in the audience?
Hearing none.
Hearing none.
Make a motion to close the public hearing and pass a favorable to town meeting.
We got a, a...
Yep.
From Pat for, to close it and give a favorable.
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous of five.
All right. Public hearing number four. Application of the Planning Board to amend Section 3.2 Accessory Buildings and Uses of the Zoning Bylaw relating to swimming pool fences. As you can see there, it shows up as Article 23 in the upcoming town meeting warrant. It amends the bylaw by eliminating the reference in Section 3.2.3 Swimming Pools. It eliminates the reference to swimming pool fences. It's in direct conflict with State Building Code, and that's, that's not permitted. The simplest way to deal with it is to just let the State Building Code do what it does. So the suggestion was to delete that, that subsection.
I have no questions on this one. It seems pretty straightforward as well.
Anyone in the audience? See nobody?
Johnny?
No. Yes.
No, it's your turn.
Okay, I'll make the motion, uh...
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing and, what is it, deleting?
No, give a favorable recommend...
Favorable recommendation.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Pat, that we close the public hearing, give a favorable recommendation. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous of five.
All righty.
Number, number five.
Public hearing number five. Application of the Planning Board to amend Section 1.5 Site Plan Review of the Zoning Bylaw relating to Site Plan Application Requirements and Time Limits. As you can see, it's Article 16 on the Town Meeting Warrant. It deletes Section 1.15.3, .4, and .5 and replaces them with new comparable sections. In spite of the verboity, it really streamlines the process. It reflects what's actually happening in the review process and the submittal process. One of the problems we've had is that the electronic permitting system that inspections has used now for a while doesn't allow you to fill out a paper copy building permit to get it stamped in and start the process the way the bylaw has in the past required it. So this will eliminate that altogether. We have new special, we have new application forms for all of our applications for the Planning Board that, that fall right into place with this proposal. At the bottom of this section, it also amends Section 115.8 by increasing the time limits for expiration of site plans from one year to three years.
Why did we wanna increase the time, Larry?
That's what had been proposed by the Planning Board.
Talked about it.
The, the, the other board members, yep.
We figured, Joe, we figured the three, the cost of doing it, three years was reasonable with a one-year extension on the, if you have, you know, with approval of the Planning Board.
Okay.
Uh, anybody in the audience have anything to say? If not...
Okay, I make a motion to close the public hearing and send a favorable report to town meeting.
But moved and seconded, we closed the public hearing and sent a favorable report to the town meeting by Lena.
Who is seconded?
Seconded by Joe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous of five.
All righty, moving right along. Public hearing number six. Application of the Planning Board to amend Section 2.3 Use Regulation Schedule by prohibiting gasoline stations in the CA Central Commercial District. It's Article 27 on the warrant. It's fairly simple and straightforward, it's just that portion of the Use Regulation Schedule. As you can see, the matrix there on, on the handout, the, the last gas station in the CA downtown zone, all four blocks of it on Main Street, was the Shell Station where the 7-Eleven is now. So it seems like this is a good time to eliminate the possibility altogether, so the chart merely changes the prior letter, which was A for special permit by ZBA, to zero or to an O, which means that it be prohibited.
It's district blocks from where?
Bob, are you here for that, to fight the gasoline stations downtown?
I am. Larry, which section of the district?
Four blocks.
Four blocks.
Runs, runs the CA zone from, from the Tom Building to the police station.
Okay. But that...
There's a small stretch on Central, but there's the...
Yeah, there's no, yeah, that, that...
Available space there.
I would suggest that that be put into the records for report to town meeting, because the question's gonna be what, what it actually is, so that way, if it's in the records when it's read, it'll be a lot clearer.
Right, well, there'll be, hopefully, an overhead that they can...
Yeah, well, you never can count on the overhead working upstairs.
That's true.
So, you know, definition of saying it's from the Tom Building back up to the police station and down, down Central Street or whatever, in, in the actual wording as, as it's presented.
Yeah, the report will explain it, yes, yes.
I have nothing else.
It's the pleasure of the board.
Send a favorable, close the public hearing, send a favorable recommendation to town meeting.
Second.
Removed by Joe, seconded by Pat, that we close the public hearing, send a favorable recommendation to town hearing, town meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous of five. We did that. That's the, yeah.
She was here.
Both, we did both at the same time.
Yep.
Well, everybody but Lena has heard all this before. One of the things that we didn't have the last time was the actual conservation restriction draft document. So I think you all should've received that by email and there's a copy in the back, but...
Killed the trees.
Let me just get caught up with my duties here.
Stuff to be doing, too, jobs, Larry.
I know. The stress is getting to me. Well, both Reno and Bob Buckley are here to help me do the presentation of that, and I'm losing my voice, so somebody's probably gonna have to finish this. As, as we reviewed the last time, the selectmen had asked about open space preservation and whether there should be anything done with the Consigli property. The short version is that I reminded them that other than the Consigli property on Dilla Street, which is this, that there's actually 200 contiguous acres of town-owned land, and suggested that if they're interested in protecting the Consigli property, that they ought to at least analyze the rest of it and understand what's available, what's there. Part of what you have in your packet is that original memo that I had sent several months ago to the selectmen. There's a, a matrix that evaluated all these properties and showed the high value of all the properties, not only in groundwater and aquifer protection, but several other environmental factors. The five or the eight properties total start with the Louisa Lake parcel, the Consigli parcel, the open space that's associated with the Dynasty III PRD. That was done in, what, 2011? The actual so-called Town Forest parcel itself, three other parcels that run over to Exit 20 behind the Water Company and west of the old rail line. Actually, the Charles River runs through the Far Eastern parcel. Right now, the Conservation Commission has jurisdiction over the Louisa Lake, the Town Forest, and this last parcel that was from Stone Ridge in 2004, I believe it was. So my suggestion was, as you can see from all that documentation, that not only the selectmen look at the Consigli piece, but look at all, all the parcels as, as a unit and, and put the remaining five parcels under Concom jurisdiction as the first step. And then the second step would be to do a conservation restriction over the entire eight parcels that total the 200 acres. Part of getting to that point is basically what the town meeting article, I think it's 17 on the warrant, that's basically what it does, is that three-step process. It, it puts the remaining five in Concom jurisdiction. It recommends putting all five under a conservation restriction that runs to the trustees of reservations or some other land trust, comparable land trust. And then it authorizes the selectmen or the Conservation Commission as appropriate to enter into a conservation restriction agreement with either the trustees or whoever it ends up being as the viable trust holder. So the town would retain ownership of all 200 acres, but the effect of having a conservation restriction would be that whatever criteria and you put in the restriction, there's several criteria for prohibited uses, exempted uses, and, and the reasons for, for adopting it. But going forward, that would be something that would be in perpetuity, so that you could know in the future that all, all of the land would, would always be protected as open space and the trustees of reservations would kind of monitor that agreement. They wouldn't be able to add anything to it or take anything away or, or bring any, you know, outside influence to, to looking at whether or not the property's still being maintained as the, the agreement proposes. So that's the short version. These other two guys probably can do a much better job of explaining some of it, which will be helpful, because I'm running out of voice. But I can take a shot at, a few answers if you have some directives.
Larry, again, I appreciate the report again. But my only fundamental problem is, I, I, I think we all agree that the 200 acres ought to go into the control of the conservation. That's why I believe. I don't think that I need, and I still don't understand why I need a third party to be involved. I, I, I have a problem and I trust, I, I don't know, and Bob, as you know, I don't always agree with the conservation, but, no, 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 but at least I have enough respect for them and the board that there is not a reason in my mind that would think that you guys would ever do anything disingenuous with that property if it was under your control. I, I just, I don't understand why I'd wanna give it, even in theory, I understand we still own the land, but the, that, that agency, if you will, and I'm gonna call it an agency, it's, it's really a trust, but they're a profit center. They're not, you know, they're, it's a very lucrative business. And again, I think the problem that I have is, we went to town meeting, town meeting approved the funds for the acquisition of the Consigli property. It ought to remain in the control of the town. I just, I'm, I'm perfect with, 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 no, 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 forever. I don't need, I, I don't understand, I don't know what the, what, to me, it's like an element of distrust. We trust the town meeting to approve the funds, but now we don't trust people of the town to oversee it. I, I, I don't, I don't, I just, I can't, I can't get there. That's just me, I can't get there. It should be under conservation control, absolutely. I'm perfect with number one. Number two and three, I can't support.
I guess my, my issue may be more. I don't know that I'm totally in support of one. I talked to Larry about this after the meeting, and I still have a concern. I, I know what you wrote in the covenant, Larry. I still feel that there's a portion of the Consigli property that I'm not convinced is best used for that, that, that I believe that maybe the town would wanna look into putting a soccer field on the section that's near Dilla Street. Again, we talked about, we had talked about, the two of us had talked about the possibility of realigning Dilla Street, about moving the parking lot. And I don't know how well that's covered in that covenant. You know, I'd also talked to you about the possibility of, you know, I know it's difficult, but could we raise the road by a foot or two? Could we make another, another possible way of getting... Could we make another, another possible way of getting people underneath the, the new bridge at Dilla Street on the bike path to keep them off of crossing Dilla Street? Because to me, that's a safety concern. People that ride bikes don't understand the rules of, of bikes and they all cross thinking they have the right of way going across Dilla Street. It's an accident waiting to happen. You know, that really needs to, to, to be a separated location. I know there's a cost involved. I think there's a way of doing that, but if we give up that whole frontage parcel, we lose that ability. So my thing was that that frontage section, and I don't know where that extends to, it's certainly not all of the Consigli property, but that some section of that needs to not be involved in any of this discussion whatsoever. That's my own feeling.
Well, I kind of, I kind of feel that the Conservation Commission is the place where everyone knows that it's going to work. That they, they take care of it, they know what's going on, and the trust should be with them. As, as to what Pat said, I, I really feel that a third party tells me that we don't trust the people to take care of our property. So I'm all for the first part. I'm not, I, I, I'm, I need to be convinced about the second part. But right now, I think we should keep it the way it is, put it in, in the conservation and know that it's going to be protected. As far as Joe is concerned, I, I didn't think of it that way, Joe. I, I, I don't know about a soccer field there, kind of. You surprised me on that one, but.
I'm not saying that that's the use. I just don't know that it's been looked at in terms of what should or shouldn't be built on and what could be built on to be used. That came to my mind is, is a, is a matter of course, you know, thinking about it for 10 minutes, but I, I don't know that anybody else is putting in any more time than that in terms of, is there another use that's more than passive recreation? That we would want to use that? And certainly if you look at the parcels, why I'm not worried about the 200 acres of the Town Forest, there's no access back there and I know we're not going to get through Consigli's property to ever get back there to use it, to think that there's a use back there that we could use. However, the front section on Dilla Street is relatively accessible. Is there another use that could possibly? And, and I believe that it has to be some, some form of recreational use. I'm not saying we're going to, we're certainly not going to put a fire station down there. We're certainly not going to put a police station down there. Those aren't the types of uses, but is there a, a recreational use that we may want to put in along that front section of the Consigli property that we haven't thought about or spent time with?
Well, when they first looked at that property, one of the things I vaguely recall doing is looking at it in terms of what could go there for playing fields. And given the sizes just for the fields, let alone any parking or any areas for spectators, as I recall, it wasn't large enough to do it. You've got quite a few wetlands in the area. The, the Huckleberry Brook still runs through there and you've got all the associated wetlands with that. So it's, it's, it's just really, it's just really not conducive to those kinds of uses, but.
Well, I guess my question goes back. Is there other uses though? We just said fields. I'm not saying, again, I threw fields out as the first thing that came to my mind. Is there something else? I don't know that it's been looked at. And I don't know, you know, I don't remember what, what you had looked at or what's out there. I, I remember once looking at this when this was sold to town meeting, I believe there was, you know, while Consigli could put 10, 12 house lots along the frontage of, of his property alone. That's a pretty big area. I, I don't know what we could have, couldn't put. So I, I, I guess I'm, I'm somewhat surprised that we couldn't get a couple of fields in there. But that's just, that's, I'm not saying that the fields are the right thing. I'm, I'm just saying that's a possibility. I'm just saying that portion of the, that portion of the parcel has me somewhat intrigued as to what its possible uses could be. And, and again, I'm not, I'm not trying to put in something that's a heavy usage type thing, but I, but I think that what I read in this, in, in what you had drawn up doesn't necessarily explore all of the possible usages. And that's what I'm worried about.
No, I think the, the intention of the uses that were listed there were uses that we felt were consistent with passive recreation. And to the extent that it may need to be clarified, I know there've been concerns about hunting or not. There've been concerns about whether somebody could go camping or not. So there, there are some uses that if they're not clearly allowed, we would want to make sure we're included in the, in the language of the text. But beyond that, I think we were focusing on fairly benign passive uses.
And, and like I said, the back parcels, I can totally understand that.
But athletic fields aren't passive uses. And so that, that's why they're not in there. Now, the, the property, the, the Consigli piece, there is language in there, although it's not real detailed yet, about, remember, this is kind of the first draft version. There's language in there about trying to realign.
I, I, I read it and if I were on the other side and if I was trustees, I believe that the amount of control that they could have over that in terms of what our realignment of Dilla Street could or couldn't be would become a bone of contention that I wouldn't want to deal with.
Oh, absolutely. Well, we would, we would specify more clearly how many feet into the property it's going to take.
Leave it under local control. You don't have to.
John, you haven't.
So, go ahead.
I can't get two words in.
Well, I'm trying, I'm trying, John.
No, I think we should just start with the first step would be to turn it over to the Conservation Committee. And let it, see what happens after that. I'm not for giving it away. I, I think I would like to keep it under control of Milford.
I, I, I think the problem that you have to a certain extent is that giving it to the Conservation Commission or not, you still face the problem. Giving it to the Conservation Commission with no wording as to usage precludes you from realigning Dilla Street. I mean, you have to go to the Conservation Commission.
Ah, no, I don't think it does. I didn't know realigning Dilla Street was, was what we were here for.
If it goes to the Conservation, how, how are we not?
Well, look at, the Conservation Commission are appointed by the selectmen. If the selectmen or, or, or the, the planning board can put together a case where a use of that property would degrade from the open space, but is more beneficial to the town as a whole, the Conservation Commission could be petitioned and perhaps even swayed to go along with that proposal. The object of the trustee is they cannot be persuaded. They have to abide by the four corners of the agreement, whatever that agreement is. So, you know, the past performance of Conservation Commissions does not guarantee future performance. We could have Conservation Commissions that are whittled down to as few as three members in the future. We have no way of knowing that. We have an uncertain, as you have an uncertain future of the uses, I have as much uncertain view of what the town would look like 25, 35, 50 years from now in terms of its makeup and the economic pressures that are, you know, we have to keep in mind that this community is 80% built out. First of all, our population has been stable for the past 10 years and is likely to be stable in the next decade at least because of the fact that we don't have much room to expand anymore. We just spent $3 million on a fantastic field facility at the high school to get us more field playing. If I hear this business about another athletic field someplace, I'm going to say, how much more athletic fields do we have to provide and, and sacrifice open space in, in that regard? So, you know, the, there is an argument on, on, on both sides. Do we want to strike a balance between having some? And this is the most sensitive land mass in the town of Milford in terms of its ecological aspects and protecting the watershed. I would think that that's a valuable thing. We want to make absolutely sure we do not jeopardize in the future. And, and your, your, your argument about an underpass at Dilla Street, I can make the same argument, which is very difficult to do, as an access road through Consigli property to that back parcel. I mean, that's not inconceivable. One could do that. One could propose, propose access through Consigli property to the back parcels. So all of that is possible.
And I'm not, and I'm, I've effectively said, I'm not looking to protect that. My, my proposal would certainly not allow that, but I, for, for exactly what you're saying, I can have a Conservation Commission where the town decides that they want to realign Dilla Street and Conservation Commission says no. I can't make that proposal. Why do I want to, I, I believe that there is a possible use for, for the front section of, of the Consigli parcel that may make some amount of sense. And, and if someone's going to tell me that that's a critical portion, I'm going to tell you that that, that parcel, we all know, was cleaned out and was, 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 to use a word, a pit beforehand. So the criticality of that is somewhat, you know, I, I think that that's somewhat questionable. Certainly the back portions, and that's why I'm saying I have no problem with the back portions. I have a problem with the front portion, but if I'm going to put it all to conservation now, I'm, I'm going to have a problem with the proposal. That's me here and that's me at town meeting.
Joe, and I'm only going to speak in terms of Woodland School, the high school, and Brookside. Conservation has always been, when it comes to town-sponsored articles or town-sponsored construction projects, they've been very, very amenable. So I, and again, to Reno's point, you can't predict 40 years from now.
Right, that's, that's.
But I, I do think that, that, I can only speak for the, for the, for the projects that I know we've put in front of them. And they've been very, very amenable. So I, I don't, I don't view that as.
I'm more worried about what the future holds. As, as he's worried about it, I'm also worried about it at our end in terms of, I have no idea what the Conservation Commission is going to be 10 years from now, what they may or may not want to do. And, and I've been through this enough times to know that time is of the essence. But if the town decided that they wanted to do, and I, and I have no idea whether we'd have ever had the money to strain out Dilla Street or not, whether there'd be any other usage or not, but that section is the only section that, that I think I worry about it. But if we went and Conservation Commission said no, and we said, okay, we're going to replace Conservation Commission, selectmen are going to appoint new people and all this, time is of the essence. By the time you did that, you'd never be able to get it back up again. You, you would have lost your opportunity.
Okay, great.
Let me just explain a couple of things. I deal a lot with conservation restrictions. We drafted the Conservation Commission assisted with the one around the 165 acres around Walden Woods. I, and the Conservation Commission assisted with the purchase of 200 acres of the Fairbanks property along the town line in Holliston. It's adjacent to where they were going to put the casino. The trustees of reservations donated $70,000 for that purchase for the, to the town of Holliston and hold the restriction. They worked with Rob Sham and then somewhat with Fafford on the casino site to try to see if Rob Shams himself and then his widow would give it up to Conservation, convey it over the town. They can be very helpful at acquisitions of properties and I think there's a little bit too much concern over their control and what they will mandate on how to use the land. It's the conservation restriction itself that specifies what can be done. For instance, in the Walden Woods 165 acres, Reno now lives there. I said, have you seen the trustees of reservations out there? Yeah, hasn't seen them yet. You know, it's not like they're overrunning, trying to manage and tell you what to do and what not to do. On the contrary, they tend to inspect the properties at least once a year. See if people are encroaching. As we all know, you've got open land, you've got people dumping on it and so forth. This is the things they tend to help out with. With respect to this property, I've been at trying to preserve the open space and the water quality around the Charles River. All the way from Echo Lake down to Cedar Swamp Pond for since the 1990s, believe it or not. I almost brought a map with me that I prepared in 2001. That pretty much shows the, the corridor of the Charles River and all the abutting lands. Who owned it, how much of it was potentially to be developed and so forth. For the sole purpose of protecting open space, improving the environment and protecting our water supply. This property here, the Consigli property, prior to the town's purchase, we attempted to get funding from the state for water protection on the Consigli piece. Conservation Commission worked hard. We were denied the grant and consequently it fell through. More because it was an isolated piece than anything else. And as you know now, those of you who see the bike trail have gone down the bike trail, realize that it goes through the entire corridor that I spent the last almost 20 years trying to do something with. With respect to, to the conservation at restriction itself, the draft we have right now includes for the widening of Dilla Street. That can be more specific. We could include within that document specific limits and I do not believe that the trustees of reservations could stop and tell the town exactly how they're going to improve Dilla Street on that strip of land. The same thing with an expansion of the parking lot. I happen to, as a registered land surveyor, I assisted them in building a parking lot on their own reservation in Dover, I believe it was. So they, they, they certainly understand that type of thing. With respect to the Consigli property as far as, as use as soccer fields and so forth, I understand the constraints. I would recommend in this day and age, the expansion on new soccer fields, you'd do better off creating synthetic turf ones and you get much more use out of them and it's less impact on the environment. With respect to the Consigli properties, although I have never seen a study for the, for the actual soccer fields on the Consigli site, I will say it is a very environmentally sensitive piece of property that's, that's directly tributary with, with the brook running through it to the area that, in our aquifer as well as our water supply. So in my mind, from a conservation standpoint, it's a, it's a property that should be preserved. With respect to conservation restrictions again, the town, as the Conservation Commission, we can't put a restriction on property we own. We can't do it to ourselves. Since the town owns the property, we can't restrict it forever. That's why the state comes up with conservation restrictions, that you give it to a third party that can enforce what it is you want to put in perpetuity. What I do for, for private landowners often, some wealthy people with estates that I did it, what comes to mind is a site in Carlisle, Anacton, where there's a cow farm that he's had. Gentleman farmer, he's had it for years, beautiful piece of property. He would like it to stay that way in perpetuity, although he wants to give it to his children, but he doesn't want his children to wind up doing a subdivision, you know, and destroy the character of the area in the town. So conservation restrictions are a means by which you can do that. And it keeps it in perpetuity. He can't, he can't deed it to his children and write in there what they can't do. That'll only last 30 years at the most and then it, then it go off. So as far as this, this 200 acres is concerned, I'm happy most of what I heard was that they trust the Conservation Commission, but it's been a, I've been here a long while on the commission and I won't be here forever. I will tell you when, what is it, Queacher Park Road? When that subdivision was coming in, Martha White came to me and the Conservation Commission and wanted the Conservation Commission to support the giving of a piece of land to, I think it was Mickey Carney at the time, I'm not sure. So that they could, giving up a piece of the Town Forest so that they could extend that road up to where Dynasty State Estates was on that. And I dug my heels in at the time and said, no. So, you know, if you had a different commission at that time, it would be a very different picture out there right now. So I think it's important to have a restriction in perpetuity.
Just let me. Just let me emphasize one point. Here's the chairman of the conservation commission. The commission has discussed this in great detail. And they're advocating for conservation restriction to trustees. So it's not just me, or Larry, or a group of us that feel that that's the best. These guys understand the limitations of the commission. And they're advocating to have this property under the guidance of a third party. Not give it away, just under the guidance of a third party. And I agree, like I said with Joe last time, the details are in this conservation restriction. Once we get all our caveats in it, the trustees may say, forget about it. We don't wanna, because you got too many conditions wrapped around it. But we wanna try to make sure we get all we, we know today we wanna do. So it's gonna take, take that course. So I think to come down right now on, on, on the negative side is probably a little bit premature.
I think it's the only time we can come down on the negative side, though, unfortunately, Reno. That's my own feeling. I mean, I, I look at, I, I don't have as much of an issue with the back sections of it and putting it in. I understand Pat's point in terms of giving it to a third party, but I'm not maybe as adverse to it. I, I, but unfortunately, to me, it's all or nothing. Because we, we're doing all of it or nothing to it per se. And I have, I have some issues that I'm not totally convinced, I understand what everybody's saying, but I'm not totally convinced that the consigly parcel has been looked at that. And I, and I bring that for two purposes. The back parcels were, were parcels that the town had owned for a long time. I wasn't around. Or they were part of what, what this board did to, to, to gain open space for the town. The consigly portion came to me as a town meeting member and was not addressed ever as an open space parcel. It was bought for the town for, for general usage. And I, you know, Larry may have looked at it, God bless him, he has. But as far as I'm concerned, town meeting nor no one else, it, it has, has had any look at that as to what other possible uses there could be. I'm the first one to admit, I'm not looking for a use that's highly intensive or not. I'm just not convinced that what goes into that, into this document, covers whatever uses may or may not happen. And unfortunately, because we're grouping the whole parcels all together, I either say no now, or I don't ever get a chance to say no again. And so my feeling is that based on what I know now, and what's being tried to, to be pushed in within now and the next three weeks, town meeting, I'm not sure that I'm gonna know that much more. As a town meeting member, I'm going to have to say no at that point in time, only because, again, it's not because, I, I think ninety percent of this is a great idea. Unfortunately, I'm not convinced that the other ten percent is. And it's my only chance to say what's going on at that point. That's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, but I don't think we can answer your question, because we, we would have to, what, anticipate what possible uses? It already got turned down for a school. We don't believe it's suitable for me. It's a highly trafficked area, so you don't want heavy use. Are we to project some uses that we think might go there? And we may, and still may not have the complete list. So I don't know how to answer your question.
I, I know you can't, but I'm, I'm saying it. I would never look at a highly intensive use, but I'm not sure that a walking path is the only thing. Is, is a playground, is a playground for kids something that gets built there? That, that isn't allowed in the workings of this, is that something you didn't wanna put down there?
That's not passive recreation.
Right.
That's right.
And I'm saying that maybe, maybe you would wanna put a playground down there, but I wouldn't be able to.
I suppose.
Well, but. I, and I've only thought about this, like I said, for ten minutes. I haven't put a lot of thought into it, but, but I, but I think it deserves that amount of thought. And I'm not saying, I, I said, you know, school's release is gonna go down there.
Yeah, you would have to give up, you'd have to give up the use of the land for anything other than passive recreation. And if you can't make that, if, if, if we wanna make the, we're trying to make, not try to make the perfect, be, the perfect be the enemy of the good. In other words, there are some things we're gonna have to give up. We're gonna have to give up things like you mentioned, to keep, you know, that whole area, including the consigly property, drains toward the Cedar Swamp Pond and the well field. So as much land as you can preserve around that aquifer really saves the town money in the future. I mean, the best, the most inexpensive way to protect the quality of the aquifer is to leave the land in its natural state, not to treat it at the treatment plant at Dill Street. So, you know, so you can say, yeah, we oughta carve up, you know, then we can lose, lose it by a thousand lashes, as they say. You die a death by a thousand lashes. Leave this piece for that, that piece for that. That, that whole area is extremely sensitive for the future of the water supply in the town of Milford. And we ought to bite the bullet and, and, and agree to that, and leave it the way it is. With many, many passive recreation activities that could go on as we possibly can think of. And then the conservation restriction isn't cast in stone for perpetuity. You can recommend another use, but it has to be within the four corners of the open space criteria that's established for that property. So it's not like, it's, 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 once it's, it's done, you can't get at it again. You can, but at, at the very front end, you have to agree, you know, what your values are and, and what, if those values are more important than others, I guess, that's, that's what everybody has to decide for themselves. And my decision has been clear for a long time.
Well, I believe, again, conservation, for conservation, I'm a hundred percent for it. This is kinda different, being on the road, being on that, that well-traveled road. And I kinda agree with Joe that the certain area in the front should be left out of it.
How much?
Again, how much is, I don't know.
Oh, that's, yeah. We think a certain amount should be to straighten out the road.
We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna make, you know, again, we're making comments, everyone's making comments, it's gonna come back. Again, this is like I said last meeting. This is not one of them school projects that you gotta vote for tomorrow, you're gonna lose the school one.
That's right.
This is a project that we got a lot of time to do it. The, no high rises are gonna be built on Dill Street next week.
No, that's for sure.
So we don't have to, we don't have to rush into it. But there's, there's something, I agree with Joe, and definitely something in that area. Again, if, just to the fact of, if passive recreation is not a kid's playground, then we gotta, we gotta do something with that front area or something. Of course, not right on the side of the road where the kids play.
Yeah, right.
But also, you, the list here is very good. A lot of thought went into it, what can be done, what can't be done. But in perpetuity, in seventy, eighty years from now, there's something that we hadn't thought of. And you're giving it to other people where, Bob, you've been on, you've done a great job on the conservation commission, you do it. But there's been people on before you who did an excellent job. And, and I thank them, and I thank you for it, believe me. It's, it's very important for what you do. And I think that you people have got the class. And I think the people gonna be appointed to it in the future will have the class to be able to handle what we're gonna do with this property and not have someone else oversee it. I think that this is what the people, the people in the town bought. This is what their tax money, and I think this is what the people want the town to be in charge of. I think they do a great job. I think you do a great job, Reno does a great job in doing it. And I, I've got all the, all the confidence in the world in you and in the future people. So again, something in the front, on the roadside. Some, a lot of thought's gonna go into it, there's no doubt about it. Again, it doesn't have to be a baseball field. But something, again, the parking lot, just something, the road, anything. That's, it's too vol, too valuable on that, on that, on the road, right on the road's edge to, to put up. It, it doesn't have to go in far.
Well, I, I, I think the conservation restriction is heading in that direction. Don't, don't misunderstand me. That, that draft is, is, is the end of the story. There's no, but to, to try to project how much frontage you can take out of the consigly property to allow some reasonable, whatever people might think is reasonable development, and not start degrading the watershed, is something that's gonna be very difficult to, to satisfy people. Have you gone far enough? Shouldn't there be more? There'll always be what if, you know? So that's, the what ifs are very hard, but, but the conservation.
Have we gone too far? That's, that, that would be my question, not have we gone far enough? If we were doing it, if I said a hundred feet, in my mind, is that too much?
Well, other than the fact, I mean, I don't think we're gonna widen Dill Street that much down there. Other than the fact that we're straightening it out, the amount of impervious surface remains almost the same, whatever the right number is. The town's gonna keep the other side where Dill Street is now, and it's gonna become open space on the other side of the street. And you're gonna have to maybe extend a few driveways. But, but that's not changing. But again, what my issue is, is trying to, is trying to take that, coordinate it with maybe an expanded parking lot for the bike path, because certainly that one down there is inadequate.
That's in the works, yeah.
You know, putting in, again, I threw out a soccer field only because it was the first thing that came to my mind. And everyone went to fields. I don't know if that's the right answer. But certainly, you know, having a playground next to the parking lot may not be a bad idea, wherever, wherever that goes and whatever it is. Is there something else? I don't know, maybe if I thought about it a little bit longer, there would be. That's what bothers me about it to, to that extent. And, and, and as Babe said, we're, we're looking at this, you know, we don't know where it's gonna be. Well, I don't know that we, we've taken a look to try to see where the new alignment would logically go to try to buffer what that would be, and then take a look at, we haven't, have we spent any money? Do we know where the wetlands are? I mean, we may out in the field know where they are, but on a, on a map to look at it and say, well, this is the logical place to put in a parking lot, or not, if we were to do it. I, I don't know, and I haven't walked that site in years. So I, I mean, I don't think, I, I think the town owes the people of the town of Milford that paid a significant portion of money to that consigly property. That level of, of, of engineering, to at least spend some amount of money to, to do some form of engineering to say, this is where we think a logical spot is, and what, and what a logical usage could possibly be. And I don't think we've done that.
Reno, one thing that, that, that I think you have to appreciate from this board is that we certainly do recognize open space and the benefit to the future of the town. And I say that because when you look at Walden Woods, okay? We did that.
Yeah, absolutely. You get a lot of credit for that.
To, to suggest that we're not forward-thinking and that our, our values aren't the same falls a little short. The huge distinction here, though, is the town of Milford never owned the land. We didn't buy it. It got donated, and the developer paid for all the trustees and the fees and so on and so forth. It was a great deal. I fall short when the town, the taxpayers, and, and the town meeting members were asked to vote on something and they funded something, which arguably we're still paying for. This was never part of the realm. So, believe me, I understand the benefit, and the trustees, I, I'm not afraid of them at all. I think what they're doing is, is admirable. But the distinction is, you're taking money from P to the pay Paul, and the other one we got for free. So there's a bit of a distinction there. I see the benefit, and that's why it's work, that they work wonderfully. But on this application, it's not exactly the same, and that's why I think it should remain under local control. With that said, I don't know what you're looking to do here. Are you looking to, to pass this off to the, to the selectmen? Are we supposed to vote on this? I don't really know where we're going with this, so we could talk this until eleven. I'm not going to, but we could, but I don't know where the end game is.
Well, I guess we could certainly give a report to town meeting if we, if we so desired, you know, the planning board.
Well, I don't know what they're looking to do. We're supposed to send something to the selectmen?
Obviously, it would be nice if the planning board gave a favorable recommendation to the town meeting for this article. If you wanna write a letter to the selectmen, that would be great. But if you, if you, maybe one way or another, you should do that and voice your, your position to the selectmen, I don't know. I mean, there's nothing required of you for this article at the town meeting. You could stay in a neutral position till you get more information, that's another option, that's at your disposal.
Well, the town meeting is gonna pass it. I'll try it.
Well, we don't know that for sure yet.
Just one other thing you should be aware of. On the conservation restriction for the two hundred acres, the conservation restriction does not have to include all two hundred acres.
No, and I, I understand, and that's where I'm coming from to a certain extent. Like I said, ninety percent of this, I'm probably, I'm, I'm probably with you. Again, I don't know that I have as much issue with, with, with the trustees as other people may or may not have. I, I think the other thing that you need to face going in front of town meeting, though, unfortunately, is, is you can see how this can get broken up into a lot of different places where somebody has a little bit of, of, of against a certain portion of it, but they're gonna be stuck voting against the whole thing because of the way it is. And that's what I had said to Larry, is, you know, if, if we could break off the front section of this, I may be one that says, yeah, I'd, I'd be for all of it. But you're asking me to come before the whole two hundred acres, and that's the way it's, right now, that's the way it's worded and the way it's coming forward. I'm saying, for that, for that ten percent, I might not be able to support you. And, and, and other people may have an issue with supporting you for trustees, and you're gonna end up, I think it's gonna be difficult to get it passed at town meeting because of all these little things that, at least right now, in the next three weeks, may hit you. And that, that's what I'm worried about. And I don't want that to happen, to be honest, because at, at the end of the day, I'd like to see, again, ninety percent of this, I'm, I'm in full agreement with you, and I'd like to see it pass.
If, if the whole, if the article was written such that the whole two hundred acres was just to be put under conservation restriction, would there be a problem with that?
I'd be amenable to that.
I'd be amenable to, also.
And I said that right from the get-go. You got me on part one.
That's, that's.
It's like the bus showed up, you opened the door.
I wanna correct something for the record, two things, I, two statements I made last time, I wasn't absolutely correct. When I said the, when, when the conservation commission issues their orders and conditions, it goes to DEP for final approval. It only goes to DEP for final approval on appeal, so I left that part out. And then the other thing was, when I said the town meeting article's in three parts, it's one article in three parts, it's not three separate articles, so I, I misspoke there to it. If we had three separate articles, I think, from what I hear, you could vote on one favorably, and the other two not. And I can understand that, but now we've got it lumped, sort of stuck, maybe, maybe.
But the reason that I thought it was important for the planning board to look at this is that it's your own comprehensive plan as well as conservation.
We agree.
Well, stand by.
The comprehensive plan never said to give it over to the T, to the trustees.
It's said to protect the land, and, and the same way with the, with the conservation commission's open space plan. So that, and aside from today being Earth Day, I thought it was appropriate that the planning board have a look at it, be able to review it, and, and see that it's following the recommendations from your comprehensive plan.
This time you've been wrong since you've been here.
But we agree.
I don't, I don't think, but again, even what I'm saying, Larry, I don't think changes what, what, what the comprehensive plan said for that section, but the restrictions in here would, to a certain extent.
I don't know that it would.
Well, they can go around and around. Thing is, everything is lumped together, so if you pass one, you're gonna pass them all, and the, the game's over. This is.
Except, except to the Concom. If you're putting it all under Concom, you've, you've all, you've all said that you would agree with that.
I said to Joe last time, I don't wanna vote, unless I see another version of this conservation restriction, I'm not ready to vote for, for, for the language that's here.
Again, like I said, I said before, we're not building, we're not building high rises. We don't have to wait for the school building authority to give us money so we can do it. We got all the time in the world. Pass over, pass over is not the worst thing in the world.
I, I guess my point, I still have some, some amount of issue with it, in that that front section doesn't, now it gets put into conservation. I'm not sure that that, that step is totally logical. Part of that parcel should certainly be. I, I would definitely be for it, for all the parcels to be put in, except for the consigly one right now, until there's a study done of the consigly one.
I'm letting it all go.
But, well, again, that's, that's, you know, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay.
Thank you, again.
You don't have to make a, make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you for your information.
Thank you. Well, yeah, you can, wanna put this on, you can put it on the next, you know.
Is that before, when's the town meeting?
When's it, May nineteenth?
So we got another, we got two more meetings.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this time.
That, adjourn, and John second, adjourn, meetings adjourn.